Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, May 4th, 2020 at Friendswood City Hall Council Chamber 610, sorry, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call the meeting to order. I didn't know we were going to have so many Baptists in the house, or I want to put you guys to work, but in lieu of that, I have asked Pastor Brent Aaron to give the invocation tonight, so after Brent gives us a little invocation, we'll say the pledges and then we'll have seats.
Everybody hear me okay? All right. How about there? All right. Almighty God, we come to you this night asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm at a time which may not be the easiest. As distances shrink and our world becomes smaller, we ask that you enable us to overcome man's real enemies, disease, poverty, and narrowness of vision as we are all in this together. We thank you, God, for the invaluable bounties with which we have been blessed in this great country, such as our freedom of religion, our unique demographic patterns of life. We ask that you guard us with wisdom and perseverance to manifest a deeper respect for the dignity of every person. We ask you to keep us safe and protected, and we also ask that you continue to watch upon, guide, and keep safe all of our first responders, our doctors, our nurses, which we are all forever grateful for each and every day of our lives. Through time, we have learned to fly through the air like birds, swim under the ocean like fish. You've shown us there's no obstacle we cannot overcome. We ask not that you teach us to walk at all times with a spirit of brotherhood and reverence for others, to live together, work together, and share blessings with others. In that spirit, may we all be instrumental in establishing the rule of justice in the affairs of you and all your children everywhere. God may you continue to bless the leaders of our country with the knowledge, wisdom, and understanding on how to govern us through a time in our history unlike any other, which there is no mangle to overcome. We ask you to continue to bless this wonderful staff of the city as they too are navigating through waters which none have never seen. We ask you to bless the members of this here council to continue to serve as positive role models for this beautiful community we all call home. Finally, may everyone here and all the residents of Friendswood be granted the understanding that we are most fortunate to be living here in such a beautiful place filled with such good people, and let us say amen.
Amen. Thanks, Brent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
So in the spirit of social distancing, you see we've kind of rearranged our dais here. We, Mary Kay, is going to be in the front row there, Marad's over here, City Secretary's over here, and so we have close to six feet from all of us, so I think that's good. What was that? Oh. Good grief. Gavel down. Okay. Item four, communications from the public. Communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee aside from city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed. I read it every time, Judge. It's just you're not here. So I'm sorry I looked up at you. Don't take that as... Cannot be discussed under this section, please contact city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. So let's see here. Whose hieroglyphics is this? Brady? Brady Bora?
Welcome, Brady. I want to just remind you that I'll be keeping the clock this evening, and you have three minutes, and after two minutes, I'll raise this card, and after you're done, I'll raise the red.
Well, I'm here to talk about live oak trees. You could have guessed probably. Two developments are planned in downtown Friendswood that put certain live oak trees in jeopardy. One of them's at 501 South Friendswood Drive, the old church parsonage. There's five live oak trees there. That, I think, if I understand it correctly, the only way to save them is to pass an ordinance, because we got a tree ordinance, but it's got holes in it. It's a good ordinance, but there's no such thing as a perfect tree ordinance. It's, needs to be interpreted, and I think if we wait for these developers to decide for us, it's going to be too late. So if we pass an ordinance that protects those trees, we might as well protect some more along here. There's a live oak tree out here that's been hit by lightning. It's at least 100 years old. It's been probably through five hurricanes, and it's worth saving. There's some other ones. They don't have to be live oaks, but, you know, just try to protect the ones that are in harm's way right now, and that's at Albretton's Old Topsole Yard and the old parsonage. So let's pass an ordinance if we can to protect those trees. If none of the other ones can get protected, then that's a victory. And I hope that we can save one or two, if not all, eight of them, you know, that are in harm's way. We're going to lose the battle if we don't take action, and I think this city is known for taking action. So we can jot out a tree ordinance right here on the back of a napkin and get the job done right now, if you'll let me. You know, whatever the wording will have to be legal, I suppose, so I can't do it, but it shouldn't be too hard. And how many more minutes do I have to talk? I think I've done it. You got the point. Those trees are going to die if we don't take action, and everybody wants to save the trees, but that don't get it done. So I'm just here beating on the bandwagon saying that we can save them if we all pull together in the same direction, because you and I won't be around in 100 years, but those trees, if we protect them, they will be. And they're a treasure, so they're worth saving. I know we need development, but I withdraw the line at removing these trees, because they're hard to, they're impossible to replace. I've never known this town without them, so I don't like to think what it would look like without them. So I hope that you'll come together on this and make it happen.
Thanks, Brady.
Thank you, Brady.
David Allen.
Okay, there are in the back on the way out, and there's one for every council member here. The plandemic, okay, Mr. Fauci, Mr. falsifying Fauci. Anyway, these are on the way out, and you can look up, I wouldn't recommend using Google, but Bing or Yahoo search engine is less politically corrected, and the articles are here. You can use those key phrases and find out how Mr. Fauci has been since 1984, that's quite a thing. The guy's 80 years old. He doesn't look like it. I hope I look like him when I'm 80, but I hope I didn't do what he's doing. He has been head of the AIDS, Allergy, and Infectious Diseases Branch of the National Institute of Health since 1984. If he gave it up, it was just very recently. But this is the guy. I think you've seen him quite a bit. He's advising the president and vice president on what to do. In 2015, they were, and you'll see the articles in the handouts, it's by the gentleman there in the black shirt on the way out, and these just came from across the street. They're brand new. They were grabbing bats in China, and in North Carolina, they were amping up, it's called gain-of-function, making it a very infectious coronavirus. They spliced part of AIDS into it, and then that was outlawed temporarily in this country, saying, "Why are you doing that?" And Mr. Fauci moved it to Wuhan, China, where they had a new bioweapons lab, and of course, it escaped from there. And then he's the one advising the president. He doesn't want to use the things that do work, like the quinine and the zinc and the antibiotic, you know, total treatment, you know, like 100 bucks or something, and then you're well again. No, he's got this new pill that costs $1,000, and instead of, you know, stopping it overnight, it takes 10 days, and you know, you get real sick, but he gets 10 pills at $1,000 apiece. He's very happy. So anyway, that's him. That's Mr. Fauci for the camera right there. Now, the other thing is 5G. We don't want 5G in this town. It's not for us. We can already look at people and talk to them on our cell phones. 5G is between 30 and 300 gigahertz. Thank you, sir. One minute. 30 and 300 gigahertz, which is billions of cycles a second. They're going to put them every 300 feet. They're going to be strapping antennas up and down your street on the light poles. They're very powerful. It will electronically beam it towards your cellphone and towards your appliances to read what you're doing in your home and track you down to the inch. The 5G network is to drive cars, making humans useless. Instead of having assistance to drive the car, they want control. The same people behind Fauci, the New World Order crowd, wants it. And also, 5G is very deleterious to your health. Again, it's a weapon system. This is the Army's access denial system for the camera. We'll have a weapon system on every street in Friendswood, or if we're smart, we'll outlaw that stuff, because we can have, if we want really fast, fiber optics 10 times faster. We can have that in our house. We don't have to be irradiated by this stuff day and night, and people with sense will move to Friendswood, and the housing values will go up instead of being a bunch of radiated cattle. But they want to find out what you're doing in your car. Yeah, it'll talk to the police. It'll talk to the insurance company. Oh, you're following that guy too closely. You're stepping on the brake too soon, too late. Don't worry. They'll make good use out of it. Anyway, the handouts are in the back on the table by the gentleman in the black shirt, and you can look up things from that.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, David.
Okay, if council will allow. John, are you awake back there? I'd like to move up item 11E, which is an ordinance dealing with our bond issuance. John's got a lot of places to be tonight, because he's a popular guy on a good day to buy bonds, sell bonds. So let me read this first. Ordinance number T-20-24, first and final reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the city of Friendswood, Texas. General obligation: permanent improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2020, levying an annual ad valorem tax for the payment of said bonds, approving an official statement, calling certain outstanding obligations for redemption prior to maturity, approving engagement of bond counsel, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Before John talks, can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion a second? Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. You're making me blush. I'm not that important, I promise you.
You're very important.
Thank you.
Tell us how much money you're saving the city.
I'm saving you some money, and actually, before I can get into this, I will give you some back color of what's happened the last couple of days. The market, again, has stayed volatile. Monday, Tuesday last week, I would have thought I was going to call Marad and Katina and say, "We're not going to sell Monday," because the market was going the wrong way. Thursday calmed down. Friday actually moved in our direction this morning, moved in our direction, so we were able to enter the market within our order period, overscribed on majority of the bond issuance. As a result, we were able to lower yields even more than what we originally thought we were going to have. So very pleased with the results of the sale. Oops, did the wrong one, didn't I? There we go. Again, this is the bond buyer index. This is an overview of the municipal bond market. As you can see in that little small box down in the bottom left, it's been very volatile. Last time we were here, the bond buyer index was actually at 2.84%. So we've come down to 2.56%, but we've also hit a low and then come back off of that low since that month period of time since I was the last out here. So that kind of shows the volatility, but I'll also say we're only 31 basis points off of all-time lows. So we're in a great environment still bonds, and as a result, this is the results we're going to present tonight to you. This is the final source and use of funds for the bonds. We broke it out to the refunding portion and the new money portion. For the refunding portion, we sold 2,600, yeah, it's 2,670,000 in bonds, and they're in the highlighted rate of a 3.034% all cost interest rate, and we compared that to the bonds refunded with 2,970,000 bonds with an interest rate of 4.341%. As a result, that generates savings of $375,825 for the city, which is a present value savings of 10.279%, which is great. For new money portion, we sold 7,795,000 in bonds, generated premium, 410,000, roughly 410,500, less the capitalized interest fund. We funded this year's interest payment with the bond issue, because you've already levied your tax rate, so it provides, same basically debt service fund balance going forward to next year. And the less expenses of 139,000 generates your total proceeds of 8 million, and we sold 30-year debt with a 2.513 all cost interest rate. So very, very pleased with that. Bonds refunded, the 2010A permanent improvement bonds, the 2010B permanent improvement and refunding bonds, same bonds we showed you last month. And then the refunding portion, the far left is the current debt service requirements for the city, less the debt service on the refunded bonds, plus the principal interest on the refunding portion, and then there in the highlighted yellow is the savings of about 25,000 a year for 15 years. Again, 10.279 present value savings. Debt service portion, I mean new money portion, excuse me, again, the far left is the debt service requirements that includes the refunding on the far left, plus the principal and the interest of the new money portion. The far right is the total resulting debt service for the city. And this generated, again, $8 million of proceeds for the construction projects and also $66,205 for the capitalized interest. And so after tonight, we're asking you to approve the bond sale. We'll have Dan Collier, Bond Counsel, send the documentation to the Attorney General for their approval, and then we'll close on June 4th.
Just one quick question. What is the coupon on the refunded bonds?
They range anywhere from 5%, 4%, and 3%.
And the yield was at 3.013?
Yields, actually, each year's got different yields.
Okay.
They started from 1.05 all the way up to, I think it was 3.08.
So and the coupon for the new bonds?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Same thing. Yes, sir. We sold this one.
They're paying quite a bit of a premium.
They're paying, yes, sir. They sure are.
And so what was the expense on the bonds? Again, could you go back to that?
Sure. There we go.
So the net premium was 410,000?
On the new money piece, on the refunding piece, it was 343, so really it was 753,000 total.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Mr. Robuck.
You're welcome.
Off to your next meeting.
I think I might do the conference room over there. Yes, sir. Thank you. Any more questions?
Can we get a vote?
Get a vote. Got a motion a second, all in favor?
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item five, work session, 5A, capital improvement projects update. Bill?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Let me get this. Okay, I'm here to give you a brief update to the city's ongoing capital improvement projects. At any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me. So the first project I'm going to talk about is the 2018-2019 Street Maintenance Program. For all intents and purposes, it's pretty much finished. It's not even, I would call it 99.99% complete. We have received the closeout documents for this, but we have one last thing that needs to be done before we can release retinage on this. In the process of the crack sealing, which was completed in the past couple of weeks, we had somebody get carried away with a pickaxe and damaged some loop detectors at the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Falling League Drive. So we've been in contact with the contractor, and they're going to have somebody go out there and fix it. In the meantime, those lights are on a timer. Our streets and drainage department has taken care of that part of it, and then hopefully we'll have that back to normal here within the next couple of weeks. And that brings us to our current year's maintenance program. The project's well underway now, and if you've driven around the neighborhoods of Friendswood, there's a good chance that you've seen some of those orange cones that you've had, and you've had to drive around those cones. So of the $4 million earmarked towards the project, we've already spent over a quarter million dollars of that on concrete street repairs. Our contractor is picking up speed in the concrete repairs, and I was actually told this morning that they, as long as the weather cooperates, they plan on pouring some concrete every single day this week, so they're moving pretty good. We don't have quite that much done in asphalt street repairs as we've run into a couple of hiccups along the way. We've had to deal with getting some permits from pipeline, and we've had some infrastructure repair, some covert sweat that have had to get repaired before we can move forward. But we're working through that, and the area that they're in right now in the Johns Steel neighborhood area, they should be wrapping that up here pretty soon, and then they'll be moving on to their next neighborhood after that. So here's, on this slide, you can see a list of streets that have been addressed so far. I went by the Castle Harbor earlier today and saw that the contractor is working on a lengthy stretch of one lane of concrete there, so that's where they're at right now as far as the concrete side is concerned. And here, and you can see a full list of streets at the city website as always. That brings me to Black Hawk Boulevard. That is now substantially complete. You can drive down that road without having to drive around any cones right now, but there are a couple of outstanding items. We've got some sign hardware that the contractor had to get ordered to get that mounted onto the signs, to make those signs a little bit more robust, to hold up to winds a little better. And then they've got some quality and some ADA issues that they need to address. When you drive by an ADA ramp, you don't necessarily see any defects in it, but an accessibility specialist will get down there with a level, and they're going to make sure that they are well within the 2% cross slope as required. And if you're off by just a little bit, it's got to come out and be repaired. And they do have, I think, two ramps that they need to repair. So out of the group, that's not very many. So this brings us to the update on Friendswood Trails Boulevard. The 100% design plans have been completed and submitted to the city. There are still a few puzzle pieces remaining before the project can get started, the most notable of which is the submission and acceptance of the final drainage report, accepted by both the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District and the city. According to the last update that we got from the county, they have a goal of awarding the contract in June, and they'd like to get started on the construction in July. We should know within the next couple of weeks if they're going to hit that goal, or if they're going to need to adjust that just slightly. Once construction begins on that, the contractor's going to have 180 days to complete the project. In the meantime, there's some other work that's being completed for this project. Texas New Mexico and Power plans on getting started later this week on relocating a transmission tower out of the middle of the Future Boulevard, and they've told the city that that should take them about a week. After that, they have their design ongoing for, or they wrapped up the design for the relocation of some distribution lines, and they're currently bidding that workout. They haven't given us a firm date on that, but they have told us that they want to get started within the next couple of weeks.
Mayor and council, just, I apologize, I didn't catch it on that last slide before it was in the back of material, but that's Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, not Friendswood Trails Boulevard.
Oh, yeah.
And that is my fault, but...
Apparently, I can use it interchangeably and...
But everything else was accurate in that, in his update on that.
So another major project we have ongoing is the reconstruction of Listation Number 23. Work has already begun on this $3.2 million project with the target date of February 2021 for completion. Currently, the contractor has some bypass pumps set up, and they're going through some last-minute details with our engineering consultant before they begin the bypass pumping portion. This is going to be the lengthiest and most critical operation of this whole project, and they're going to have that, those bypass pumps set up for quite a while, a couple of months, and once they have that set up here within the next couple of days, they'll start that and get started with the demolition of the existing structure. So just an update on the infrastructure that's been taken in by the city here recently. As you can see, there's a couple thousand linear feet of forest main, sewer main, and water main that has been built and accepted by the city for Clear Creek Community Church. Also on that list is 745 linear feet of waterline for the Lundley Lane Estates subdivision. They completed testing on that last week, early last week, and so it's ready, and it is on tonight's consent agenda for acceptance. And I'd like to give you an update on some of the projects that are being undertaken in the city by other agencies. The most notable of these is the upgrade to the intersection of Beamer Road and FM 2351. Harris County has been waiting for several utilities to complete the relocation of their lines. The last of those was finished last week, so Harris County advises that they're going to be getting back to work here real soon. Once that begins, it's going to get a little congested around there, so people may want to take that into consideration whenever they're driving out of town to maybe take another route out of here, but...
So that says 2021. You're implying that it's coming real soon, like maybe this month?
Oh, yeah. Well, Bo did a very good job of catching all my mistakes.
That's strike two, Bo.
It's, yeah, 2020. Yes, yes, and it's going to be narrowed down to, I think the first stage is they'll be narrowing it down to where everybody's going to be driving on the northern lanes of 2351, and then they'll get it switched over date. Said that they fast-tracked this project, and by fast-tracking that, they mean that they're going to be using stuff like early street high-yield concrete that'll allow them to open up those streets a little quicker. Same stuff we're using on our street project, and it really comes in handy when you really need to get the street back, open back up. Okay, the date on this one is correct. I wanted to let you guys know that the 30% design plans have been completed for the upgrades to FM 518 downtown. This project will add sidewalks in areas where there isn't any, and will make, repair the existing sections of sidewalks where they need them, and the traffic signals will be upgraded. Now that we have the 30% plans, we can see where all the easements that are going to be necessary. It's going to be widened to six feet, the sidewalks, so there are some areas where we may need to go after some easements, and we'll be, we'll know more about that in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. We've asked the design engineer to send us some information on that so that we can get started on that. This project's still on track to be let in February 2021. This project's still on track to be let in February 2021.
The sidewalks on there are six feet of concrete paving, but with a one-foot border, border on either side of brick pavers to make the total eight-foot sidewalks along 518.
So I know they're working on the medians as well. Is it anticipated that the median work will be complete before the sidewalk work begins? Okay, I kind of thought that might be part of the...
Esplanade.
Oh, yeah, the esplanades, according to the mayor.
We live in that kind of town. We got esplanades. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And Mayor and Council, you'll note, Hill didn't mention any of the drainage projects that will come next month with Samantha, our Deputy Director of Engineering, to give you a quarterly update on that.
Thanks, Hill. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Item six, public hearing to receive comments from the public, both oral and written regarding zone classification change request to assign single-family residential SFR as the zoning district for .1738 acres of vacated right-of-way request in process and to allow a specific use permit SUP for mixed-use number 8131 religious organizations as an overlay on the following properties. 111 East Heritage Drive, 2.983 acres, Lot 1, Block 1, Final Platt of First Baptist Church of Friendswood, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. 209 South Friendswood Drive, 1.0528 acres, being a portion of Lot 2, Block 2 of the Friendswood subdivision, recorded in Platt Record 7, map number 20 of the Galveston County map record, situated in the Sarah McKissick League Abstract Number 151, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. 201 East Heritage Drive, .4223 acres of land, being all that, of that certain called lot number one of Harper subdivision, an unrecorded subdivision, the Sarah McKissick survey, Abstract Number 151, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. 204 and 206 East Heritage Drive, .8151 acres of land, being all of that certain called .8151 acre tract of land conveyed by deed recorded under Galveston County Clerk's file number 2007037162, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. 208 East Heritage Drive, .8913 acres of land, being all of that certain called .9117 acre tract of land conveyed by deed, recorded under Galveston County Clerk's file number 2007037164, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, right-of-way. .1738 acres out of Lot 1, Block 2, Friendswood subdivision, a subdivision according to the map or plat thereof, recorded under volume 254, page 37, also known as an unrecorded portion of East Heritage Drive, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, pending request to vacate and to replace a specific use permit on the property located at 202 East Heritage Drive, 2.98 acres, single-family residential, specific use permit, SFR, SUP 2001-09 for Family Life Center.
Second.
How'd I do, Mary Kay? Okay. So, having said all that, Aubrey, are you going to tell them what I said?
Yeah, I can try to clarify that a little bit. So basically, this is the First Baptist Church campus. They've acquired some additional properties. They have their main campus at 111 East Heritage Drive is where their main sanctuary is and they've had the Family Life Center that was approved in 2001 with an SUP. So they've acquired a few additional pieces of property, one of those being on 209 South Friendswood Drive, which is the old King's Kids daycare. That is a L-shaped property that has frontage on Friendswood Drive and then the L goes back to pecan. So basically, it's a variety of underlying zoning districts. They all allow the religious organizations use with an SUP overlay on them, and so this is an effort to clean up their zoning and then also allow them to expand and build on their master plan for their campus. So there are phase, they do have a phasing plan, so Phase 1A would be June of 2020, which is this coming up quick, to improve and expand the parking at 209 South Friendswood Drive. And then Phase 1B in October 2020 would be a new welcome center addition and south church expansion, and that's on their main sanctuary property at 111 East Heritage. And then Phase 2, administrative, administration building renovation and expansion at 209, which is the old King's Kids building. And then eventually Phase 3, new storage building and parking at 201 East Heritage. Phase 4 would be a north expansion at the church, interior renovation and adjacent site improvements at the main building. And then Phase 5, removal of the building and completion of education building at the main building. And then Phase 6 would be Family Life Center addition and adjacent parking expansion. So like I said, it's a long-term plan for them. The Planning and Zoning Commission did have their meeting on April 23rd and had their public hearing. They voted four to two and we had one commissioner absent, and so to approve the changes with the following conditions. The maximum height of the ornamental tower, cross, and combination of all structures is subject to the maximum building height of 70 feet as specified by the Downtown District zoning regulations. The original proposed height of that was 90 feet 10 inches and the alternate landscape plan calculations as approved and presented in the landscape plan.
Can you back up real quick when you were giving the height? So it was 70 for the downtown overlay district and then you said 90?
The, so in their SUP proposal, they're proposing a height of 90 feet 10 inches. Their main building is 44 feet. The tower that would be, it's just a tower, would be 72 feet tall and then the cross would be on top of that would make it 90 feet 10 inches. So the commission's recommendation is to just have that total combined structure be 70 feet, which is what's allowed in the Downtown District.
Okay. Well, so the, the height restriction in the downtown area was previously based on fire trucks available?
The height restrictions in the downtown area were originally based on the height of the fire trucks, right, to be able to extinguish?
A number of years ago, yes.
Yes, originally, and then that was changed what in 2007 or something like that?
It was about 2000, I want to say eight or nine, it was changed to 70 feet. Initially intended to encourage the mixed-use development that we were looking for in downtown so you would be able to have a retail, a commercial-based business on the first floor and then have viable projects above it, residential projects.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. So when was it, when was it changed to 70?
In that same timeframe?
That same timeframe. 70 was the, was what it was adjusted to?
Correct.
When the, when the Downtown District was added in 2007, it was 70 feet.
Okay. Okay. So I guess the, the tower itself, not including the cross on top, is 72?
Mm-hmm.
If, if they made that to 70, I mean, would it, would there be an objection by P&amp;Z at that point because the cross itself is not something to worry about extinguishing in, in the event of fire or anything like that, so...
And we can discuss that further on in the ordinance with the public hearing. At this moment, intended to get some folks up to...
Yep, thanks for reminding me.
I appreciate it.
So just to expand on P&amp;Z's recommendation a little bit, the Planning and Zoning Commission has from time to time allowed other structures to go beyond the prescribed height limits when there were technical requirements necessitating additional height. The primary rationale for adhering to the Downtown District maximum height of 70 feet in this zone change request was that there was no technical reasons requiring the exemption and a strong concern of setting a precedent for future structures in the Downtown District to build above the maximum, maximum allowable height. And I believe the applicant is here with some additional information as well.
Okay. Well, let me just ask, for the public hearing portion of this, are there any people here that would like to speak in favor of this project? We're here to, to get public hearing, so come on up.
I thought it did. Mary Kay, does the three-minute...
Yeah, maybe just introduce the project and then we'll tell the, they're considering...
She says yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Kopp. I'm speaking on behalf of First Baptist Friendswood, who has representatives here, as well as the pastor, David Lorenz, and I'm with Zeigler Cooper Architects and we're helping to, helping the church through the SUP process and some of their improvements on their campus. Like Aubrey said, this is a long-range plan. We're thinking, hopefully about 20 years into the future, knowing full well that there will be changes throughout the process, but it, it gives us a strategic plan to be able to plan where certain buildings need to grow and, and work within the campus because it is a very complex campus now that they've acquired new lots. So we do try to, we're trying to renovate a lot of the exterior finishes of all the different buildings that they have on campus, trying to unify the campus as one. And with that, Aubrey went through the list of phasing and what we anticipate, how we're going to be building in that campus. One of the comments that came out of our P&amp;Z meeting was the, was the schedule for the 209 improvements. Currently, Phase 1 only includes the improvements of the parking area to help, help support the, the new welcome center that will be Phase 2. At this time, we don't have the funds to improve the building at 209, but they, the church is very eager to get that started and give a facelift to that corner because they know that that's a very important corner there. But as you know how fundraising is for church campuses, a lot of the interest goes towards the church building and not necessarily to the offices that would be planned for the 209 building, but that is planned for Phase 3 as soon as they can.
I'd just like to say the plans are very impressive. I'm looking at them right now. They're very impressive.
Well, thank you. I was going to go through a few of the slides because one of the other comments that came out of P&amp;Z was the height of the tower and knowing that we had a restriction for 70 feet, but possibly the exclusion for, for belfries, for spires and so forth, that maybe there might be an exception made for this tower. It is an unoccupied tower. The first floor, you know, of course, connects the church building with the welcome center or the lobby, but the, the upper floors, they're unoccupied at all, just empty. So if, if restricting it to a 70-foot height for, for accessibility, for fire is necessary, then we can certainly do that. But I was going to go through a few slides. We, we took some images from Google Maps and to show what kind of conditions we're looking at as we drive down South Friendswood Drive. And then I also took some shots of our rendering model and put some of those buildings to kind of give you an idea of scale of how that tower, how the building interacts with, with the drive. So this is one of the properties that they did acquire, but we do not have plans to improve yet, is Dunn Brothers. And you can see the corner there with Dunn Brothers up at the front at East Heritage and 518. Is there a pointer on this? There should be. There it is. Okay, all right. So, so South Friendswood Drive runs right here. The main church building, the main church block is up in this area. Dunn Brothers is right here on this corner. And then I created a cone, this yellow portion, where you can get a visual snip of what that church is and you can kind of see it right there existing. And then you can see how, of course, there might be more trees, but you can see how that tower element, you know, compares to the Dunn Brothers. I drove across 518 and timed it to about 15 seconds from, from this vantage point to the, to the next corner at Shadow Bend. And to get a view of this building, it's 1.4 seconds at 30 miles an hour. Now, the view that you get when you proceed down 518 in front of CoAmerica Bank is nothing. Can't see it at all. There's nothing there, not even the top of the, the current building. And then as we move towards Shadow Bend, this is the King's Kids here. This is the, the rendering of what we intend to approve the building as, but there's no view at all. And then as you move towards, towards 2351, then you get a little snippet and that'll equal to about 2.2 seconds of what you can see there. So just that little cone right there in between the, the bank drop and 209, that's what you can see. And then you can see, just as you're entering into the new developed, well, it's existing, but it would be an improved drive into the new parking lot. That's the view that you would see and you see how that bank drop cuts off a lot of the view there of the church. So I hope that illustrates, you know, what kind, what kind of image you're trying to achieve along 518.
Omar.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. I think you saw the pictures. They speak for themselves. They add quite an attraction, attractive facade to the, to the city. I think it's consistent with what the city is trying to do on 518 to improve the looks. It's also a place that people will come. It will encourage them to be good citizens and we just, we worked hard on this. We, we, we spent many, many months on the design. We changed things. We came back and we said, what would Friendswood benefit from? And we think Friendswood benefits from this building, from the church being there. We have a large congregation now. It is our intent and our, always our intent to grow God's kingdom here on earth and in heaven. We would like you to consider this and that tower, even though it is 90 feet and it does maybe set a precedence, but we've already done that with other buildings in town. We've set precedence. We have a tower in this town that's 80-foot and we all call it the what? Whataburger Tower? So we would ask that you consider strongly approving this with the tower at 90 feet. I think John hit on something when he said the cross is up there. The cross is not what I would consider a fire element. The, the cross is going to fall if the tower burns. That's the bottom line. So I would ask that you seriously give it consideration to approve the SUP that's before you tonight with the tower and at 90 feet with the cross included there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You speaking in favor, Phil?
The renderings look beautiful and I, I support this. The one contention I have is that if we haven't already done it around setting a precedent of taking property off the tax rolls is that we look at something, traditionally, people with entities have done a dollar fee so that it's not free type thing, and here, maybe we look at what we actually pay to mow that little parcel of land as a fee or something to purchase something so we don't set the precedent that we're taking money off the tax roll and giving it to somebody at zero dollars. That's all I ask. But it's beautiful, it's going to be beautiful.
You're, you're talking about the easement then? Just the easement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of the project? I couldn't help himself. Come on up, David. Got away with no invocation, so you...
Well, well, my name's David Lorenz. I'm the pastor at First Baptist Friendswood. I know everybody on the council. Thank you. I was going to let others do the talking for me tonight, but I would say, first of all, we actually have paid taxes for the last two years on the former Baker Grocery Store. all, we actually have paid taxes for the last two years on the former Baker Grocery Store/King's Kids. We just got that, that off the tax rolls. So when it comes to supporting financially, I think we've done that. We also pay taxes because we own the property and the building of Dunn Brothers, so we pay taxes there. So I would say we contribute as best we can to the ongoing support of our community and do our fair share. I would say this, I, actually, the only thing I had thought about saying tonight was giving us the opportunity to help the city create a new ordinance. That, to me, is kind of our opportunity we have, that 70 feet, 72 feet, with an 18-foot tower, all those things, we're, we're haggling over a couple of feet here, when really, instead of making exception after exception, let, let's make a new ordinance. And as you can tell from the view that Stephanie worked very hard on, that it's not obtrusive, it's not overpowering, it, it's, it's not unsightly, it's a beautiful structure. We want to continue to improve the land that we have, both on 518 and Heritage and Pecan and Morningside and, 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 as we go throughout these next 15 to 20 years. And so I would just encourage you to approve this, and then maybe let's work together to create a new ordinance, so that we can have some consistency in what we're doing. So, thank you.
Good point. Good point. I'll be the first to say, we love having the Baptist church in this community. I, you know, the fact that you don't pay property taxes on some of your things is, is far, I think, outweighed by all the, the benefits that, that your congregation brings. I, I'm the first one to definitely step up and say that. David, are you coming back to talk again?
Yeah. His name is David. Mine is David.
Okay.
For some years, I was an election judge of 80, 98 and 2008. And they always had, the precinct where I live was in that multi-use building they have across from the main church. And the people were always, you know, I don't remember who the, who the people were, but, you know, the secretary and all that, but they were always very friendly. And when my kids were young, they had the creation conferences and the family building, and they were fun to bring the kids to. And, and still, it's a sharp-looking church, and they have, you know, real nice facilities for the, for the young ones and everything. And so anyways, very good, as far as I can tell, very worthy place, so more power to it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the project?
Want to speak from here?
What's the matter, Connie?
Um, you know, Texas has some beautiful towns.
I think we need you over there. People are going to say, "What did she say?"
Texas is known for some beautiful towns. And one of the things that we always notice when we go through these towns are the beautiful churches. And our church, it's not my church, I don't regularly attend that church, but our churches here in Friendswood, when, when they're hidden behind stuff like this is, and, and you can't see them, and our town is built on faith, family and education, so why hide that? Why not let that cross, that tower raised that high to be seen? That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. All right. Anybody want to speak in opposition to this project? All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will discuss this again when we get around to the ordinance, but let's get back on the script here for a minute. Rod, item seven is another communications from the public. Is that on there? Is there some?
It's on there twice, simply because we started the meeting at 6:30.
Oh.
Assuming there's no one, well, thanks, Phil. Just joking. Yeah.
All right. Communication from the public. Does anybody want to hear me?
You don't have to read it again, though.
Give the speech again?
No.
Phil Rataso.
Mayor, council, staff, you know, that I was part of the group, worked very hard on the drainage and that, and we've got, we're going to sell some bonds and start working on drainage. I hope that you all keep in mind that we use, let the data guide us, so that we keep the maximum, keep water out of the maximum number of homes in Friendswood. So I ask that as we move forward, that we keep that in mind, and that we use the data to drive our decisions, and we go forth with that, and that we parlay our $41 million into as much money as we can get from the other agencies and get the work done. Thank you.
Amen. Thanks, Phil.
Can I speak on, since this is like, kind of, again, it was on that trees, the guy with the trees, can I say something on that?
Fill out a card.
Okay. Do I have to fill out?
Go ahead. Talk and then fill out the card.
I gave it to, a note to mow over there. Okay, so where I work, there's a thing called, it's diamond grid, diamond grid, and it's recycled plastic. It's very strong. It's like a honeycomb shape, I think, six-sided deal. And you lay it on the ground, and the thing with trees, my first degree is in forestry, when, when you change the soil level around trees, that's what kills them. Usually, you bury them, the roots can't breathe. So the trick is, if we have some large trees, put a certain, the type of gravel that whatever the engineer recommends, you know, would be very stable, but it breathes, you lay this diamond grid on top of it, and then fill it with gravel, whatever, maybe a different grade of gravel. And you can drive a truck on that thing, park it. It gets environmental benefits of, you know, the rain leaches right through, and it doesn't, you know, cause extra runoff. And it gives oxygen to the roots, because it's pebbles instead of solid dirt. And you could do parking under the trees, yeah, that may drop some sap on you, you know, but that could save a lot of money and a lot of the trees. So the diamond grid, it's very, very, it's inexpensive. It's an Australian company, but they have a factory here, and they use recycled plastic to make this stuff. It's very, very good.
Thanks, David. All right. Moving on. Item eight, city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you well know, we've been, under a new pandemic, I say new, we've been in, in a crisis mode for a number of weeks now, for, well, since early March, late February. But I'm going to talk about Harvey first. Sorry. Hurricane Harvey, as you know, we have a hazard mitigation grant program that the city qualified for, for acquisitions of properties that were flooded during Hurricane Harvey. The original application actually included 26 properties, but by the time the grant was awarded, we only had 24 that were still viable. Of the 24 properties that were approved by the Texas Division of Emergency Management, three properties we have closed on. Seven properties are currently under negotiations, and we've sent the owners of those properties a notice saying they have a deadline of mid-May, so May 15th, to get us their final answers. 14 properties have altogether declined our offers, and we're currently advertising for demolitions and removal services for the properties that we have closed on and the other ones that we're soon to close on. We had a second buyout application that was approved by FEMA and the state of Texas, and that's the Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant through the Texas Water Development Board. That particular application included four properties. One of the properties we've closed on, Shadwell, there at the end of Cowards Creek, next to Stevenson Park. Another property in Polly Ranch declined and withdrew their application. The third property on Castle Wood is currently in negotiations, and they've signed an intent letter to accept the offer. And the fourth property in Quakers Landing is securing another private appraisal to appeal the offer that was sent to them. On the Community Development Block Grant, grant that the city is qualified for, on the Harris County side, last month, you approved a contract with Harris County Commissioners' Court for the improvements and acquisition of the Black Hawk facility, the old Foodline Building. As you recall, a portion of that facility will be dedicated to emergency shelter. And we also approved a contract with Harris County Commissioners' Court for the Forest Bend Detention Project. This is over there at Clear Creek and FM 528. As, right now, we're going through the request for qualifications to select an engineer for the design of that project. On the Galveston County side, same Community Development Lot Grant dollars, we received word last week and positive news that the two acquisition projects, the Frenchman's Creek and Deepwood, have been approved, and so we're entering into the contract phase with the General Land Office for those. Contract between the City of Friendswood and the General Land Office, its offers have still not been extended to those property owners since we have to get into a contract with the General Land Office first, hire an administrator, grant administrator, and then secure appraisers, appraisals before we can make offers. The other project, two infrastructure projects included in that grant, one was to convert the Deepwood properties that we acquire, along with the old Public Works and Parks Facility on Deepwood, to a flood mitigation project, a giant shelf or detention facility of some sort. And also to bury the utility lines that cross Clear Creek at Polly Ranch to go over to the wastewater treatment plant on Bay Area Boulevard, as, to include a future shelf there at that location along Clear Creek. Staff in our Fire Marshal's Office is still working diligently with FEMA to close out the damages to Deepwood and Shadwell. Mentioned last time, the project keeps going back to pricing with FEMA, I think 13 times or thereabouts, and, I mean, there's no exaggeration there. Brian had hair when we started this process.
I did too.
I did as well, yes. We're hopeful that we'll get this finalized shortly. We have had some promising results, but it's not finalized yet. On a positive note, however, originally after Hurricane Harvey, we qualified for some reimbursement to the tune of 90% federal funds, 10% local funds for some of our emergency response measures. The state has since come back and reimbursed us 75% of our 10% share, so we only expended very little money on, in that effort, so we're excited about that. The coronavirus, what I started out the presentation discussing, as you know, we've, we're operating under a new normal and have been for a number of months. Many of our citizens have seen some variation of the charts that are on the screen before you. Friendswood throughout this process has fared fairly well. Thank God for that. But there's still a long way ahead. In Friendswood, currently, we have roughly 21 active cases, and I say active simply because there's still some discrepancy in terms of the recovery numbers. The Harris County data that we receive doesn't get updated routinely as far as those that have recovered, but we're still monitoring that fairly closely. Councilmember Rocky, if a number of you follow him on social media, has been providing some graphs from the data points that have been provided out there. Galveston County itself is doing fairly well. Originally, we had projected that the number of cases would go up dramatically as testing approved. We've been testing more per capita than anywhere else and seeing an opposite trend.
Yeah, I know you can't read the graph very well. On the red is the number of, of cases, and the blue is the percent of Galveston County that's been tested. So, starting about three weeks ago, Galveston County really picked up the pace on testing, and in fact, over 5% of the county has now been tested. And that may be the highest county in the country right now, in terms of that. And what that tells you is it gives you, it's a good experiment. You know, you've got a lot of data to, to look at, and at the same time, I mean, the theory was, if you tested a lot more people, you'd find a lot of people had the disease, but they weren't showing symptoms. That's not what we're seeing in the Galveston County data, is they've increased the amount of testing, the actual number, number percentage-wise has gone down, which is good. Good to hear. And I think we've got to give credit to the county and those in the leadership positions in the county. We're really, we're not a big county, and I understand, and we got some advantages here. We've got UTMB, which has helped on a lot of this testing. We have a Level 4 infectious disease facility in the county, and, and they've relied on that resource, resource as well. But you can get tested in Galveston for free. You do not have to have symptoms. You just simply call one of the four or five sites and set up an appointment, and go get a four-inch thing shoved up your nose, and you find out whether you have it or not. But Galveston County is really a shining star here. And, you know, regarding, I know, trust me, I've put a lot of things on Facebook, and I get political comments all the time. Forget the politics, you know, we just got to give credit to our county commissioners and the, and the Health, Health Department and all that of, for having put this together. And it's, it is really interesting that it has not proven out to have increased the number of cases, like thought.
We do have two more facilities opening up this week in the nearby vicinity that Galveston County is working with the Health District on. The one closest to Friendswood in, in League City at Creekside Intermediate School does require insurance, though, so it's not completely free. They're going to bill your insurance. With respect to operations here at the City of Friendswood, we're still operating in a, a modified service model, so a number of facilities, including City Hall, is currently closed to the public. However, 99.99% of our activities is still available by phone over the internet, and we'll meet with folks by appointment if necessary to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks. We did this early on to ensure that vital services continue. I don't want to get into a situation where we have a 911 call for other emergencies and we're not able to respond because we haven't taken the proper precautions up front. We have ramped up disinfecting efforts throughout City Hall and other public facilities, as well as the vehicles that our employees use to do their jobs. We've enacted some telecommuting options that I mentioned last month, as well as require the use of PPEs across the board, depending on the jobs. So the, the N95 masks, the gloves, are dedicated for our first responders, obviously, because they have more contact with the public, but then other folks are, have been socially distanced, and you'll see a number of folks wearing masks at various workstations throughout each facility. Externally, we're still engaging folks, but we're just making sure we do it with some precaution. This week, the Animal Control Facility has opened back up to the public with some protocols in place to include temperature scans, as well as PPEs, both for staff as well as the public that goes into the facility. We're working, as I mentioned earlier, with the county on additional testing sites, a few of them are opening this week, and we're continuing to put, push out information on social media and other avenues to encourage folks that need assistance, are able to secure assistance. The mayor's economic recovery team has met a number of times virtually, and they're continually monitoring both the federal programs, as well as the state and local programs that may be of assistance for folks. At this time, as folks are needing help, we're putting, pointing them to the right direction, so that they can get some much-needed Small Business Administration, I say loans, a number of our grants. So those opportunities are out there, and we are available if there are any future cases or other concerns that folks may have to help them navigate the waters. We've canceled concerts in the park, and we're currently evaluating the Memorial Day and Summer Day Camp programs. Hopefully, we'll have, with respect to Memorial Day, maybe an alternate service to recognize our veterans and those that have sacrificed their lives for this country. And we are not going to cancel the Fourth of July celebration. Don't know exactly what it's going to look like as of yet, but the streak will live on. If, if Friendswood's the only one doing it, we will have a celebration of some sort. And that's the city manager's report.
Thanks, Marad. Item nine is communications from committee and special reports, annual report from the Fourth of July Steering Committee.
So Vice Chairman Barbara Blanchard is not here this evening, but her report's included in the backup material, and they're evaluating alternatives right now.
Yeah, because it, it kind of reads like the virus never affected us, and I'm sure there'll be some modifications to all the things that they're...
That's how optimistic they are, Mayor.
Yeah, I love it. I love that they're optimistic. Okay. Item 10, resolution. Consideration of possible action regarding the following. A, Resolution Number R 2020-13, a resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, finding that Texas New Mexico Power Company's application for a distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied, authorizing participation with DNMP cities, authorizing the hiring of legal counsel and consulting services, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? All right. Ordinances. Ordinance Number T 20-13, second and final reading of an ordinance of the City of Friendswood, Texas, granting an electrical franchise to CenterPoint Energy pursuant to Texas Utility Code Sections 33.008, 181.042, and 181.043, stating a purpose, providing for a term of 30 years, providing for the location of facilities, providing for repair of excavations and obstructions, providing for indemnity to the City of Friendswood, providing for street rental, repealing the former franchise, which is ordinance number 84-16 of the City of Friendswood.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Ordinance Number T 20-19, second and final reading of an ordinance approving a request to vacate a .1738 acre portion of a 60-foot public right-of-way, also known as East Heritage Drive, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest a quitclaim deed by and between the city and First Baptist... to attest a quitclaim deed by and between the city and First Baptist Church of Friendswood.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
I'd like to discuss it.
Discuss.
Discussion?
Are we allowed to?
Yes, sir, definitely.
Just a little quick.
Yeah.
We were just a little quick.
Kind of blow through these second readings.
I understand, I understand. As somebody spoke about tonight, I've been on council eight years, and maybe once or twice, we've, we've done something where we've ceded right-of-way when it has, you know, been good for both parties, like this case. But in those cases, it's gone to private property owners, and it's gone on the tax rolls. I think the world of the Baptist Church, they're great citizens, they do a lot for the city. I'm just concerned that we are giving away the citizens' property with no remuneration, and it won't be taxed. I'd be, it'd be much happier if we had a, if we just sold it to them. And I, and, you know, again, it'd be sold, they're really cheap, I don't care what the price is, to be honest. But then I think it's a clean deal. They own the land, they can do whatever they want with it, we don't have any kind of restrictions later on this, that, or the other thing. So, I'm, I would like to, to, I'm going to vote against this, and the reason I'm going to vote against it is I think that we ought to explore with them just a sale, a simple sale. Get off our hands, give it to them, and be able to tell people we aren't giving your, we aren't giving your property away for nothing.
That is a great idea that I wish we would have thought about about a month ago. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Ordinance Number T-20-22, first and final reading of an ordinance amending city of Friendswood, Texas. Ordinance Number T-2019-38, passed and approved October 7th, 2019, same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 by approving Budget Amendment Six to the original general budget of the city of Friendswood, Texas for the fiscal year 2019-2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, ordinance T-20-23, first and final reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Friendswood, amending the calling of the, for the holding of a special election to be held on July 14th, 2020, for the purpose of reauthorizing the local sales and use tax at the rate of three-eighths of a cent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second.
And Mayor and Council, I was just going to specify, we still haven't had a final word from the governor's office, whether or not we can hold the election in July. This is done somewhat in faith, hoping that if they do agree, that we've already passed the ordinance within the timeframe allotted for us.
Discussion. Robert?
I just wanted to mention, Mo, that I received a phone call from some people who live over on the Black Hawk side, and the barriers in the picture were still up, but they are down now. And they just love the road. That hall, I wish I had a chance to tell Hill while he was still here, but I've got a lot of feedback from everybody, and it, oh, sorry, looks great, and it's really appreciative. So, thanks, good job.
Yes, so this is a very important election for us. I have to be careful not to speak like I'm promoting this, because Mary Kay's looking at me with those eyes. Just to educate everybody, all I'm doing is educating you. This is the sales and use, three-eighths of a cent that we put towards maintaining our streets, has to be reauthorized every four years. We authorized it the first time in 2016, it passed, and we want to get it on the ballot, obviously, so that we can reauthorize it and continue to spend these four million dollars, you know, on these projects. It doesn't, three-eighths of a cent is probably about one point eight, two, two million dollars a year generates, quite a bit of money, but that's a lot of money that we can put towards repairing these streets that are getting a little old here in the city of Friendswood.
And the citizens are really appreciative of the work.
Yeah, so I hope, I hope they show that appreciation with their ballots. Come out to vote.
Stop while you're not too far behind, fellas.
Am I on the wrong side of this? I hope that they come vote.
Come they vote.
Enough said, sorry.
Call for the vote.
Jeff, just delete that part. Okay, all in favor? I hope we get approval for July 14th, that would be great. Okay, we did item E, down to item F, ordinance Number T-20-25, first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Appendix C, zoning by amending the zoning classification to assign single-family residential as a zoning district for point one seven three eight acres of vacated right-of-way, and to allow a specific use permit for next-use eight one three one religious organizations as an overlay on the following properties, point one seven three eight acres of vacated right-of-way, single-family residential, one eleven East Heritage Drive, two point nine eight three acres downtown district, two oh nine South Friendswood Drive, one point oh five two eight acres downtown district, two oh one East Heritage Drive, point four two two three acres multifamily residential low density, two oh four and two oh six East Heritage Drive, point eight one five one acres single-family residential, two oh eight East Heritage Drive, point eight nine one three acres single-family residential, and to replace the specific use permit on the property located at two oh two East Heritage Drive, two point nine eight acres, single-family residential specific use permit for family life center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. I'm sure there's some discussion on this. Steve, go ahead.
Can I ask a series of questions? I just, a bunch of questions.
No, only comical questions during this session, maybe.
Only what?
Comical.
Comical, rhetorical?
Is it serious?
Oh, serious.
Ask a serious question.
Serious.
Serious.
S-E-R-I-E-S. Listen, listen. Now, if, if we vote for this tonight, what are we voting for in terms of the, like, what Planning and Zoning said on the, on the tower and all these other things? Are we voting, are we voting to approve the plan as is, or is the way Planning and Zoning sent it to us?
That's a good question.
So, the way it's in your backup material, you're voting as they presented it, however, you have the recommendation memo in your backup material, so you're welcome to say we vote in accordance with what P&amp;Z recommended, we vote in a completely different line of thinking, whatever y'all see fit. And then, whatever y'all decide tonight will be memorialized in the second reading of the ordinance later on in June.
The motion to approve was a motion to approve it as submitted by the applicant.
Correct. Yes. So, next question.
Wait, 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 Mary Kay?
Yeah, the, the motion to approve would approve the ordinance as presented, which is the seventy-foot height.
It's a seventy-foot or a ninety?
Seventy is what is in the ordinance with the recommendation from P&amp;Z.
Okay. All right. Second question is, what does an SUP get us for this project?
So, the current zoning and all, ask, already get up, is not appropriate across all the church's properties?
It basically, any types of additional screening that would be required for uses that require specific use permits, and I'm not talking about just the church, but in general, when we require, when we require a specific use permit for a type of use, it's just a chance to look at the use, the surrounding properties, and at that time to add any additional requirements to the property that would help protect adjacent residents or anything like that.
Okay, but, so, so for example, by giving it an SUP, we would not be removing the requirement to meet the downtown district architectural requirements on any of it, right?
They still meet all the regulation, the zoning regulations for all the underlying zoning districts.
Okay. And then, there's a, there's a little piece of property on this, that's, I think it's got a house on it now, and they want to put a storage facility there, and so the house is going to be removed?
Yes.
And that is in a residential area, right?
It's zone multifamily residential load.
And are there any deed restrictions or anything in there that, that are going to be a problem? If you're going to put a, basically a non-house?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, I mean, is that a yes or a no?
I would say no. I don't, there's a, I don't know, they, we got the deed, and I didn't see any restrictions in there.
But we're going to go in, we're going to allow them to go into a residential area and build a, basically a commercial-type building?
It's, it's an accessory, it's an accessory use to the church, and so the SUP that allows the religious organizations, would it include that as an accessory structure for the church?
Right, but if it was any other neighborhood, I mean, I live near a church, if they bought my next-door neighbor's house and wanted to put a building up on there, that might be an issue for the neighborhood, right?
They would have to secure a specific use permit, permit or another zoning classification such as a planning unit development, and that's what the church is doing here tonight. So, the totality of Friends, First Baptist property holdings includes more than just what the church sanctuary sits on today.
I understand.
So, we asked them to come in and unify all of their zoning categories under a single specific use permit for the total project to include the current residentially-zoned property. So, the SUP would allow them to build the accessory structure for the church in compliance with our code of ordinances, even though it was on a formerly residential property.
So, I just want to be clear, if we approve the SUP, we're allowing a commercial building in what's now a residential neighborhood?
Correct.
Without, you know, without having heard from the homeowners, or, you know, whether, whether there is or is not a HOA or whatever to deal with.
But that's what the SUP is for, so those homeowners...
I understand, I'm just saying that, I'm clear, that if we agree to that, we're agreeing to allow a building right next door to a bunch of houses.
Correct.
Okay, and then, the last question I have is on the tower. I actually liked Pastor David's suggestion. I would much rather we worked on the ordinance so that we don't create Louis Tannis coming back to us and wanting to put another twenty-foot of something on his building, or every other church in town wanting to put a big tower up and, and get answers to these questions about, if anybody, I don't want to create a precedent where somebody can come in and say, I can put something decorative and go above the fifty-foot thing, okay? I love their tower, it looks great, you know, to me, but I don't want to do the precedent. So, I thought the idea of let's, let's look at this and write an ordinance that protects us from what we don't want and allows what we do want would be the way to go.
Exactly. You took the words right out of my mouth. Stephanie, did you want to step up and say something to address a question? Is it beneficial, you think, edifying, or?
Well, I just wanted to speak a little bit to the architectural character of that one piece of property where we were replacing the house, that we did take that in consideration, and we, we oriented that structure to, to shield, shield the neighbors from whatever activity might be going on on that piece of property, because it is for storage. And we also made, you know, put in a gable roof, there's brick masonry, there's asphalt shingles, so it's supposed to reflect a residential-type character in that area.
I, I know, but my...
It's not your typical storage buildings with a...
I got you, that's fine, but, but my concern here is, we're allowing inclusion, or, somebody come into a residential neighborhood, take down a house, put up a building that's not a house, and, and you could have that problem all over the city. In fact, that's the whole reason for having zoning, is to not allow things like that, so.
Well, exactly why we have public hearings, so that people can come in and tell us if they don't like the idea that there's going to be a building replacing a house. So, I think we're, I think we're, we're doing it all correctly in that regard, but to expound on what you said, I totally agree. I, I'm in favor of this ordinance as long as we're, we're holding to the seventy-foot limit for now. I would, I would love for Mr. Matranga and his Planning and Zoning Commissioners to go and write us an ordinance, present an ordinance that allows for something higher than that for across, you know, special cases, because I don't, just like Steve said, I don't want to set precedent, you know, and have people come in and say, well, you did it for them, why aren't you doing it for us? If we just had a clean ordinance that, you know, we can all get behind and, and agree to, I think that's the answer. So, I'm in favor of, of this entire plan, the way it's written, that where we're holding them, and you're nodding your head, Mary Kay, that we're holding them to seventy feet, the downtown district limit for now, and then in the future, and we're not, we're not really holding you up too much, this sounds like a long-range plan, the cross isn't going up next week, so if we can, you know, get this figured out in the next few...
Well, that is phase two, so we...
Phase two, I love it. Okay, enough said.
But, but we've got, we're working on the drawings right now, so...
Yes, right.
There might be a little, little bit of a window.
Well, here comes the chief fundraiser right here.
We'd be glad to do all of this with some donations from council members. I would actually like some clarity, and, Dr. Rocky, I would say that there's a mobile home park one block away, the corner that this building that you're referring to sits on, two sides of that are the church's property. One side actually is a residence that uses their garage as a business, or has in the past as a salon, a hair barbershop, which of course, no one's getting these days unless you have hair like mine. And so, I would argue that with our design and other things, this is going to be a nice, the nicest storage building you've ever seen, first of all. Second, I would like some clarity, just since we're about to have a little vote here, and it does impact us both financially. The decision you make here tonight does impact us financially, because we have to go back potentially and do some drawings, but also aesthetically. We showed you from that view what exactly seventy feet means, and we can go a lot of directions, is that seventy feet for the tower, plus a slightly adjusted-for perspective cross on top, or is that seventy feet total? That, that needs to be clarified, because even as I sat there listening, I'm not sure the council is fully clear on what exactly we're voting for. So, I would just ask that everyone be on the same page on what we're actually voting for, what you're voting for, so I appreciate that.
So, I'd like to ask the applicant, David, would, would you prefer that we, I mean, that we vote on this as is, or would you prefer that we wait and try to come up with a better ordinance that's going to suit what you need for the cross?
I would actually defer to our architect. My preference is that we would be able at some point to use the seventy, seventy, seventy-two foot tower with the appropriate cross on top.
My feeling is, is that's not going to happen right now. Well, I, I'll, I'll say this, I will like to amend my motion and make a motion to approve as the plans are presented for ninety feet, ten inches, including the cross, and then let everybody vote on that, and then we can, we can see if that passes, it passes, if it fails, it fails, then we can move on from there. But I'd like to amend my motion to accept the plans as presented with the, the steeple and the cross as presented. And I would need a second for that.
Well, I was the second, but I have some questions first, because I'm a little confused.
Point of order. Once there's a motion, you can't discuss the second. It's either be a second or you say nothing.
Okay, I'll second it. All right, now I have some questions, right? Or do we have to vote on that, though? Okay, so, in that, well, there are two things. So, let me go to the, maybe the most thing that just confused me tonight. I thought when we voted on an ordinance, that we were voting on the ordinance that the applicant requested, and we got information from P&amp;Z, whether they said yes or no. But I thought I heard you just say that this included the seventy-foot...
Recommendation.
Recommendation from P&amp;Z. So, is that what we normally do? Because normally, I thought we got the ordinance from the applicant with the recommendation from P&amp;Z.
The application, I'm sorry.
No, I'm wrong?
No, you're right, you're right.
No, the ordinance reflects the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's why this, the ordinance that's in the packet to be considered includes the seventy-foot height for downtown district. That's their recommendation to you, and of course, you have the ability to amend it.
So, we're voting on P&amp;Z's recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the applicant's? Okay.
Not anymore.
No, no, I know, no, no, I know, no. Okay, but I, I have been confused about that, because I thought that's not how we normally did it. Okay. Second thing is, I, when I listened to the P&amp;Z meeting, I was on the telephone, and I had asked Mary Kay to look up something before the meeting, so in seven Q three, I know there are different places in the ordinance that talk about height, but in that one, there is a sentence in there where, where it talks, well, it gives exceptions. Bell towers, steeples, different radio towers, different things, but it also, there is a sentence in there that says, P&amp;Z and council can make exceptions, and then it goes on to say, but seventy feet is the high, I mean, seventy, not seventy, what's it say? Says seventy feet is the highest.
Well-
Or does it say 50? It says 50.
It says 50 in this provision.
Because it doesn't even address the downtown.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's, and so I called Joe and Aubrey and said, "This really needs to be cleaned up because it's confusing to applicants. It's confusing to me." And then with that sentence in there, that P&amp;Z and council can make exceptions, does that mean we can go ahead and vote on it anyway? But I agree totally. We need to clean this up. I am totally in favor, I am in favor of this. But I would like this cleaned up for P&amp;Z and to protect ourselves. Because I think there are things, like you're not standing up at 90 feet looking in somebody else's backyard. It's not a fire hazard. I've already checked with Brian. It's not something that the fire department would say, "This is a, you know, a risk for this city." So I think that there are some parameters about how close it is to residential. I think there are some parameters that could be written in that make this easier to understand. And I would recommend that P&amp;Z and council consider that as well. But I still am not sure exactly what I'm voting for. I'm voting for tonight.
Okay.
Can I make a comment, ma'am?
Please.
So if we were to vote in favor of this as it is in our packet, I asked already, you already admitted it's a 20-year plan. We've already talked about possibly reviewing the ordinance. There is nothing to prevent us from approving this as it currently stands. You're not going to get on building this bell tower anytime soon. It's phase two, correct? So if you did come back once we've had a chance to review an ordinance, if that's what we decided to direct P&amp;Z to do, all you do is come back and present the plan for your bell tower. You don't start all over again. So it holds up nothing, and it buys everybody a little bit of time. And I'll be honest, I'm inclined to support planning and zoning. They do their due diligence. I appreciate all the effort they put into this. And I really, I don't want our guidelines to turn out like, who knows Pirates of the Caribbean, where the pirate says, "That's more of a guideline than a rule." I don't want our ordinances to begin to look like they're just more of guidelines than rules. So I don't want to set a precedence that we, anytime asked, we just say, "Eh, never mind. We're not going to worry about the ordinance." So I would have a problem with not supporting P&amp;Z's recommendation. But I also feel like if we take a look at this in downtown specifically and see what we think is in the best interest of our Friendswood community, because the building, the plan that's been presented, it's gorgeous. It's just what we want in downtown Friendswood. It's absolutely beautiful. So that would be the way I would try to vote this evening.
Okay. So just to regroup here, we have an amended motion and a second to basically get off the script here and pass an ordinance that is not written in our, in our agenda. We are totally off-script here. I am not in support of the amended motion because I would like, not like to set that precedent at this, at this vote. And I would like to do what Councilmember Rocky and Pastor Lauren's basically suggested is, hey, draft an ordinance, come back, that allows for things like steeples, crosses. It's, it's above the bell tower. It's a cross that is causing the problem here. So I would, I'll tell you, we can take the vote on the amended motion. I'm going to vote against that, but I'll go back and vote in favor of the ordinance as written.
Well, so hang on real quick. So-
No, I'm not, I'm-
I'm sorry.
I'm passing you the microphone.
Okay. So there are exceptions for bell towers and things of that nature in the ordinance?
But not in excess of 70?
Not in excess of-
50 feet unless otherwise approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Gotcha. 50 feet. Yeah, I got you. I got you.
But there are technical reasons for communication towers, water towers, and those kind of things that-
Gotcha.
That allow it to go higher.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Well, so, you know, I kind of know, I kind of know where I think things are going to fall. So the question again, that I would ask the applicant is, you know, how detrimental to your plans would it be if you had to come back in 30 days or 60 days after planning and zoning had a chance to review the ordinance, workshop the ordinance, and maybe come up with a consensus that could be approved by council? Or would you prefer that we vote tonight on something that you don't want?
May I offer a solution before the applicant answers? Assuming council doesn't approve the amended motion as stated, just simply removing the height limitation restriction on the ordinance and says to comply with downtown district as amended. When P&amp;Z goes back and develops a new height restriction, whether it's higher or lower, their ordinance is already in compliance with it, and they build to that new restriction. So they don't have to come back before council. So assuming Robert's amended motion, Trish, the second, it fails, and the height restriction would revert back to what's in the ordinance, just amend the draft ordinance that simply say, "Height shall be in compliance with the downtown district as amended." So there's no height restriction in, written into this ordinance. It simply defaults to the city's current ordinances.
Okay.
And then when the city's current ordinance, if and when it's approved, it's modified in the future, they have the latitude afforded to them there.
Gotcha.
And I know you like this because I heard you say this 10 times. If we're going to approve something, why don't we just write an ordinance to make it-
I agree. I wish we stuck to the single-family residential lot size, like we stick to the church cross issue.
There you go.
I mean, it would make so much more sense, right, Joe?
That's 90 feet in a different direction. Brent, you got anything else?
Of course it is. That's right.
Robert, anything else? So on the amended motion, everybody clear on the amended motion?
Yeah.
A vote in favor is agreeing to 90 feet right out of the chute tonight. I think there's some unintended consequences that we, we would have problems with. But as long as everybody's clear, all in favor of the amended motion? All opposed? Okay, going back to the original motion and second that we had.
Can I amend the original motion? Is that permissible? Or does he have to amend it? I can amend it? So I want to, I can or not? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance with, tell me what you said a minute ago, Mo, without the 90, without the height.
Without a restriction on height and then just default to the city's current ordinances.
With defaulting to the city's current ordinances regarding height.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
If y'all understood that.
So just, just to be clear, the city ordinance for the downtown district is 50 feet?
70.
70 feet.
70 feet?
70.
70 feet.
The rest of the town is 50.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
Directing to the pastor there, I actually really like that you're going down that street with nicer buildings. You can go all the way down to that old elderly care place for all. I think we'd actually be very happy with that. So I just wanted to make a point. I wasn't arguing that you weren't going to do something gorgeous. I think you are going to do something gorgeous. I just wanted to make sure that we understood that we are allowing a, a commercial building in a, in a residential neighborhood. That's all.
Yes, I appreciate that. We do need, we do have some timing issues that I'd like Stephanie to speak to related to all this discussion over the last 15 minutes.
Okay. So in the sequence of events, in the phasing, we do have it structured as phase one being the parking lot for 209, phase two being the welcome center with the tower. It's really a phase one A, a phase one B. We're trying to, we do have this project split out permitting, but it's really kind of rolling off the, the tail end of the, of the last project. Now, if we were to go ahead and move forward with the ordinance to incorporate some kind of standard for, for a steeple that exceeds the 70-foot height limit, we do need to, we would ask that council would consider approving the SUP, at least to go forward with the phase one A improvement project of the 209 parking to get us going with that. Because we're, we're trying to overlap a permit review with the SUP.
That's the motion.
So I just wanted to make that very clear.
That's the motion.
And then I wanted to ask, maybe Aubrey knows, how long would that process take to get that ordinance?
We'll probably discuss that as a supplemental right after this.
The answer is probably a couple of months. P&amp;Z will take a month or two to put their plan together, present it to us. It's, it, it won't be passed next month, but, and it'd take two readings. So, you know, it's-
Maybe end of summer, September.
End of summer. But it's, I think it's very doable. I think I'm reading the tea leaves here, and I think we can get this done.
As fast as government can do anything.
That's right. Okay, so any more discussion? The, the current motion is to approve this, just amending the words such that it doesn't read a particular height. It says to the limit of the current downtown district or, so there is some tweaking in the ordinance that we are going to do. Are you up with that, Mary Kay? On board? You know what we're talking about?
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
And it'll be, it'll be memorialized for you in second reading, so.
Next month, I understand. I just want to make sure that we're all clear on, on sort of what's been said and what's been said 10 times. Any more discussion on that? Okay, current motion, all in favor? Pass. So we got another motion kind of hanging out there. We want Robert to just withdraw his original motion.
No, I don't know.
He amended, it was amended. That motion was amended.
And failed.
70-foot to the 90-foot, and then-
What was amended?
In the amended motion failed, and then Ms. Hanks has her motion. So I think you're done.
Okay, but just, just to be clear, when, when she brought up the, the motion, the original motion, she did tweak the wording in there. And so-
The height, yeah.
She kind of made that motion, and Steve seconded that. So we, that was a, in my mind, an altogether different motion now.
Yes.
If we're all clear.
Yes, I agree. Trish, Ms. Hanks-
Now we have to, now we have to vote on the original motion. We voted on the amendment.
I think Robert can withdraw the original motion. Am I not correct on that? I'm not a Roberts Rules expert, but if he withdraws his original motion, then we basically pass the motion, pass the ordinance.
He doesn't need to, though. We did, we just, we passed the amendment that Trish brought out. Now all we got to do is pass the original motion. It's already amended when we do that.
Everybody on board with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Claire's mind?
Mary Kay's not on board with that.
Everybody?
Mary Kay's not clear on that.
No, I'm sorry. Would you repeat that, Steve?
So we had a motion. We did an amendment. The amendment failed. That drops us back to the original motion. We then did another amendment, which passed. We still got to approve the original motion.
Yes. And the, and the original motion would be, it was agreed to amended, what Ms. Hanks-
As amended.
It sounds silly, but yes, we got to agree.
So all in favor of the original motion as amended?
As amended, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Good. I know you're not sure what you're voting on.
Now, may I make a supplemental motion?
Yes, please.
I, I, no, this will be very quick. Relax. I, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize planning and zoning to begin to work on looking at this ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Fast track it.
All right.
All right. You got your marching orders, Joe, Aubrey?
We all did.
Yes, okay. All right. Presentation of certificates of election. Wow, this is, this would be the easiest thing on the agenda.
I would have thought anything was hard.
Certificate of election. Certificate of election in the name and by the authority of the city of Friendswood, Texas. This is to certify that Sally Branson was unopposed and therefore duly, therefore duly elected to council position two for the purpose of the May 2, 2020 general election pursuant to ordinances, blah, 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 testimony whereof.
Yada, yada, yada.
Yada, yada. I signed it. There you go. You're elected to another term. And certificate of election in the name and by the authority of the city of Friendswood, Texas, is to certify that John H. Scott was unopposed and therefore duly elected to council position number five for purposes of the May 2, 2020 general election pursuant to ordinance number 2020. Congratulations. Give me your germs.
I'd like to somebody define, I'd like somebody to define the term unopposed. I've never experienced that.
Next year, Steve.
Most people don't.
All right. Oaths of office were already, were they performed? Or, no, just pictures. I'm sorry, Judge. No, we, all we did was pictures. I'm confused. Sorry. 13 oaths of office. The Honorable Judge Jim Woltz will administer the oath of office for council position number two and council position number five. I was wondering why you were sitting there all night.
I was going to say, we stayed there all night just to watch that.
Congratulations, Sally.
The robe didn't fully end?
Well, I knew he was here. I just thought, wow, there's a, there's a resident that really is involved.
Okay, good. I'm glad because I thought, man, if I've been on council for a year and a half, I could-
[inaudible]
Send you some pictures.
You hear me?
Yeah. Everybody in Friendswood did.
Item 14, communications from mayor and council members. Anybody want to say anything else? Seems like we have a-
I do have one thing.
Councilmember Scott.
I'll have to pull it up on my phone. I only say this. It's like the one good thing I found on social media during this whole deal, but I thought it was worth sharing. If I can find it, somebody else can go first.
Brent, got anything? Brent, Aaron Work, has been on council for a year now.
Yep.
You're allowed to talk now, Brent. Put in your, yeah. You appreciate the invocation? Thank you.
So anyway, so I, I wish I knew where I could get this blown up and put on the wall. But, yeah, there, yeah, there's probably ways, I'm sure. Anyway, I thought it was fitting for, for everything that we've gone through and all the debates and all the other things that we've got. It was the most truthful thing that I saw on, on Facebook, so I thought I'd read it. Says, "Fear does not stop death. It stops life. And worrying does not take away tomorrow's troubles. It takes away today's peace." So I would hope that, that if you can find that quote, you can see that. I think that we've allowed fear to run all of us into a sheltered corner, and I wish we were less fearful.
I just want to mention that I was at the Baptist church yesterday in the Life Center, and I gave blood. They usually have a blood drive over there. Very often, I know it's publicized by the Chamber of Commerce, too. And I just want everybody to remember, even though we're in a pandemic, we still need blood. That's, that's our life-giving blood need. And, and if you can give, I just want to tell everybody, if you can give, please give.
Yes, I just want to echo what Sally said about P&amp;Z. I think they do a fantastic job, and I'm really happy that we're going to change the ordinance because that's really the way to make this work. And so thank you. Thanks, Mo, for your leadership on, in the city right now through this- I think they do a fantastic job, and I'm really happy that we're going to change the ordinance because that's really the way to make this work. And so thank you. Thanks, Mo, for your leadership on, in the city right now through this pandemic. I think Friendswood's handled things really well, and I appreciate it.
I, too, would like to thank the city. I appreciate the way you all have handled this in such a calm manner, and I think that that has helped kind of what John was talking about, is let's not panic, let's cooler heads prevail. And I appreciate that our numbers have remained low, as you talked about, Steve, and so I appreciate, I echo Councilmember Hanks. Y'all have done a great job, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, along the same vein, and John, I liked your quote. We just, we're going to get all through this. We'll be fine, and we'll hopefully all stay, stay healthy, you know, keep an eye on the data, and hope that our leadership does the right things and keep, you know, keep our city safe.
Mayor, may I just say something? I do want to say that I support P&amp;Z, too. If I don't always agree with their recommendations, that does not mean I'm against P&amp;Z. I think P&amp;Z does a wonderful job, but to make it sound as if I'm against P&amp;Z is not the case. Some of the recommendations that they make, I might not agree with, that's all.
I'll just take my minute to, again, applaud all the, the city staff, and I'll, I'll name names here since there's a bunch of them in the room here. James Tony, our Parks and Recreation Director, James Tony, keeping as much open as we possibly could. He's out there talking to our Recreation Director, I guess, Michael Boyett. But those two guys, you know, doing great work. Our Fire Marshal, Brian Mansfield, back there. Yeah, I'm talking about you. Community Development, Aubrey Harbin, keeping all the plans and everything, all the inspections, everything's going. James Tony, thank you. Who else is in here? Sorry. Katina, Administrative Services is here, you know, making sure people are paying for their water and all that kind of stuff, keeping the, the stuff going, paying our bills, collecting our money. Yeah. Director of Engineering, Hill, Hilardo, Adius, thank you for being here. You didn't know what you were getting yourself into when you moved over here to Friendswood, but we are glad that you're here, making it happen, you know. Jeff Newfer, our Communications Specialist in the back, always here, always, you know, putting out the good word and letting everybody know what's going on. Our City Attorney, Mary Kay, thank you for being here, keeping us on track. You had your hands full tonight. I apologize. Keep us coloring inside the lines. Our City Secretary, Melinda Welsh, thank you. I'm getting to the, the headshed here in a second. Yes. Thank you, City Secretary. Back in the back, our Deputy City, Assistant City Manager, Stephen Ray, thank you so much. I know, you know, you, you get a lot of these little jobs that you got to take care of, all the little things that Mo dumps on you, you know, so thank you for really being the, the guy at the helm, making the city go in the right direction. And then, of course, Murad Kabiri, our City Manager. We wouldn't be where we are today without, without him. So I just want to stand up and applaud all of you guys because you guys are doing a fantastic job. And remember, remember, you know, the, the city is operating just like there was no pandemic. All, just about everything you can do in the city like there was no pandemic, and these guys go home and they have families, and, and they're dealing, their families are dealing with this pandemic, just like all of us are. Renee, I didn't see you back there, Public Works, stick your head in here, too. Thank you, sir. But anyway, I'll, that, I'll, I'll sit down, I'll, I'll stop, but that, I just wanted to give you guys credit because there's a lot of great stuff going on, and it's all the directors here that are making it happen in this city. Item 15 is a consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to a second. All in favor? Passes. Item 16, closed executive session. Item A, communications from the public regarding executive session topics. Anybody from the public want to talk, say anything about our closed executive session? All right, we're going to go into executive session. Council may convene into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to section 551.074, personnel matters, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee with possible discussions and actions related thereto an open session, evaluation of City Secretary. So we will do that. We'll reconvene in a short time, and don't feel like y'all have to wait.